Welcome, everybody, to our September 2 regular City Commission meeting. Happy to have you all here today. We'll call this meeting to order, and I'll look to Nikki to leave us in our indication of pledge of allegiance, and you all can sit right.
As we prepare our hearts and minds to begin this meeting, let us all take a moment to reflect together in silence, each according to our own individual beliefs and intentions, and offer a moment for the 13 service members who were killed in the Kabul Airport attack in Afghanistan this week. May we remember the courage of all of our service members in the face of great odds. May we remember their sacrifices and those of their families and friends with deep gratitude. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We don't have any presentations tonight, so we'll move right on to citizen input. This is a time for anyone to speak on any item that's not already on the agenda. Okay, I don't see anybody coming forward. We'll move on to action items. We have our first reading of ordinance 2130 regarding legislative changes to the water and sewer impact fees. Nikki, would you please read ordinance 21-30 by title only?
Yes, Mayor. It's number 21-30, an ordinance of the city of Dunedin, Florida, amending Section 78-423 of Article 8, Chapter 78 of the City Code of Ordinances to eliminate automatic annual changes in the water and sewer development fees imposed and collected by the city they're under and providing for an effective date. Mayor and Commissioners, this has been reading of ordinance 21-30 on first reading by title only.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to approve?
Some of...
Yes. Commissioner Gow and Commissioner Kynes. All right. Paul?
All right. Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. Paul Stanek, Public Works and Utilities Director, and I'm here to speak to you tonight about our impact fees, or better known, at least in our ordinances, as development fees. Since 2016, we've had an indexed impact fee. We brought that in front of the commission as a change to doing periodic reviews of the impact fees, and we wanted to be able to adjust the fees, but both up and/or down based on what was going on with the economy. So if you remember back in 2016, we were just starting to come out of the economic downturn, in which point in time, you know, values of properties and infrastructure would have been lost, and so we would have been looking at actually decreases in the impact fees versus increasing. So it seemed to be a fair way to implement changes automatically to those impact fees if we did it on an annual basis based on an index, and that index then would go up or down based on what the economy was. So that's worked well for the last four years. This legislative session, one of the changes was to the Impact Fee Act, and that change was brought on by a couple different, I think one county, one municipality, that raised the rates by one, by over 100%. And that caught the attention of one of our House Representatives, and they amended the Impact Fee Act to pretty much do away with those large increases over a short period of time. So the change then limited increases to, instead of, you know, every year and even indexed like we do here, to limiting the increases to only once every four years. So what I'm here for you and in front of you tonight is to actually change our ordinance to remove that automatic indexing that we put in place five years ago, because we are now not allowed to raise our rates other than once every four years.
Okay, questions for Paul?
Also, just so the commission's aware, my law partner, Chris Rowe, who assists with the city's impact fee work, he's an absolute impact fee and assessment guru, is on the line to as well answer any questions that you all may have, and Paul, I know you may receive the bullet points, but I'm not sure if they made it to the commission, so I can forward that to you right now as well.
Yeah, I did not send those. Those came out, I think, today or yesterday, and the bullet points reference the actual change in the impact fee and goes more to the specifics of what you can and can't do and how often that you are allowed to do them. And one of the things, too, speaking with Chris, the question was, based on the implementation date of January 1 of 2021, and with us just raising our impact fee by $20 on the wastewater side and $24, I think it was, on the water side, is when could we raise those rates again? And based on the work that Chris Rowe did with BMO, we're now looking at fiscal '25 or October 1, 2024, before we can adjust those rates again. Also, going in, there are cases that can be made for catastrophic changes, so if we really did need, for us, I don't see that happening, because we are pretty much mostly built out, and impact fees can only be used for development, but there are provisions in there that you can do large changes in a short period of time, but based on it actually being more of an emergency type of need and not just a catch-up or an annual increase.
Okay, so, Chris, did you have anything to add to all of that?
No, ma'am, other than to note, as Paul has stated, that there is an exception provision in the new impact fee law by which the city could increase more often than once every four years. It can exceed the 50% cap on increases that set forth the new law, and you can also avoid the phasing in of increases that's otherwise required in the new law. The new law basically says that when you increase your assess, excuse me, your impact, you've got to adopt the increase in annual installment, so that, say for instance, you increase your existing impact fee by 25%, you've got to break that increase in two and implement it over a two-year period. And if you go up to 50%, you've got to phase it in over a four-year period. The exception in the impact fee statute allows you to disregard those limitations if certain circumstances are present, one of which is that you have a study demonstrating the need to fill yourself with the exceptions, and then you have to have these two public workshops on the need to exceed those limitations, and then you have to have basically a two-thirds vote of your board members in order to, not unanimous, but close to it, so heightened situation where you can avoid those limitations, but as Paul states, it's almost, not quite an emergency situation, but you really have to do show a need to evade from this.
And extraordinary circumstance, I believe, is the term used.
Okay. Thank you.
That's correct.
Commissioner?
So in the last five years, do you know what our percentage increases have been each year?
Starting in fiscal 2017, we raised it 4.21%, 18 was 2.61%, 19 was 1.68%, and '20 to '21 was 1.27%.
So is this like a sledgehammer, because one municipality did something?
The answer is yes.
Thank you.
It is, and it's...
It's an overreach, for sure.
It is.
It is. It's unfortunate, and especially with some of the other legislative changes that were made during the year, where I could see on either the water, the wastewater side, capacity being an issue, and municipalities or counties needing, you know, more money, and because of that capacity and the development, to increase that capacity, that that's where would, what would fund those things would be the actual impact fees. So to me, in reality, what that does is it actually turns all of that around onto the ratepayers, and definitely in the short term, and it ends up being the long term. So I'm not a mystic or a future teller, fortune teller, but I'm thinking, based on, you know, those specific environmental changes that were made, it seems to be anti-intuitive as to what this impact fee change has done, and hopefully somebody will work to make it a little bit more realistic.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, you know, the whole idea of impact fees is to protect our existing rate users from the influx of new people, and to make it kind of development-friendly or doesn't make sense to me.
Right.
It is what it is.
And part of that, too, was, once again, those large increases, but that's because those cities and counties have not done any increases over a long period of time. Actually going back and doing research, other than our little, you know, 1% to 4% or changes here, the last time we actually had a major increase to our impact fees was fiscal year 2007. So it's been 14 years since we've had anything major.
What was that, even a big one? What was that?
That one went from, I didn't do a percentage on that, the sewer fee went from about $1,500, it was about $150 for the sewer impact fee, and the water fee was the big one. It went up from $1,000 to $1,900. So that was a good-sized jump. Obviously, that would not be allowed today, what happened back then.
But obviously, what we were doing was to responsibly index it, so you wouldn't get into those situations.
Well, and correct, and once again, that's all based on, you know, working with, back in the day, it was Burton and Associates, now at StanTech, to actually do the financial model and to look at what those actual costs would be.
Thank you. Any questions, John?
No, ma'am.
I was just wondering, do, okay, I'm going to give out, play out this scenario. So you can do it every four years, and we say we're going to raise it 25%. So do we, we have to hear it every year, and so the first year, you don't have to hear it every year, but you have to, you have to do that in two years, correct?
That's right.
And then if it's, if it's 25 to 50, we don't have to hear it every year, but that has to be played out over the four years.
That's correct.
And then you can't do it over 50 unless it is extraordinary circumstances, which could be proved that would be, puts you in an exemption status, or exception status.
That's right.
Okay, thank you.
John, any questions?
Yes, thank you. Paul, how does this affect us overall, from the standpoint, for example, if we have a redevelopment, how does this, how does the impact fee affect us on a redevelopment, for example?
Well, for redevelopment, and, you know, you all know how, you know, we kind of work here in Dunedin, we try to be fair and equitable to everybody. So even before there was a requirement in the Impact Fee Act to give credit for what was there already, we were doing that. So any type of redevelopment that you have, we're going in, if it's commercial, we're looking at the number of fixtures. If it's multifamily residential, we're looking at the number of units, and what we do is we give credits for what was already there. And what's interesting, you know, we've had some redevelopment that's actually gotten smaller, specifically Oak Bend Mobile Home Park, and the number of units that was there previously to the Oak Bend townhomes that are now there now, it's about a 50% change being smaller. So they're going to end up actually not paying any impact fees for water and sewer because of their credits were over what the credits, or what they needed for the actual impact fees. So for redevelopment purposes, we look at what's there already or originally, and then we make a determination only on the difference, and then only if that difference is greater than what's there now.
And so thank you very much for that explanation, for everyone that is listening that wanted to hear that or needed to hear that. And then, second of all, your point about, about where we stand with development in our, in our community at this point, this is, this has a limited effect on us, it would seem.
It does. We're not looking at great development here, we're pretty much built out. We, you know, have rightsized our water treatment and our wastewater treatment plant, and, you know, the same with our collection and distribution systems.
So this is just, we're just looking at this really from the standpoint of how do we put this in from a legislative requirement into our system, and you've explained what we have to do to do that. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you, Commissioner. Paul, did we anticipate doing a study anytime soon?
Well, we did one this past year when we did the rate study, so actually it was for fiscal 2020, and that was what was part of the packet. It did say rate analysis in there, but the impact fee analysis was in there as well.
That was actually in December, Mayor, and then the legislation was introduced January 16 of 2021.
Yeah.
So right after you had your study completed.
Well, what's interesting is, because when we completed the study, we went and did the, we enacted the new rate structure that we put in, and that was the, those two readings were the first two ordinances of 2021, and they were done in January. So based on the retroactive date, even if we had gone in and changed our impact fees at that point in time, we would now be sitting here not only taking, we would be taking away those increases and making them back to what they were prior to January 1 of this year.
Because the legislate, because the bill is retroactive?
Correct. It's expressly retroactive, back to January 1 of 2021, even though it was...
That's very specific, so he was really attacking that city, is what was going on.
Yep.
Because, I mean, usually the bill passes and its effective is July 1.
Or even October, usually, for things of this nature, you'll see them be effective in October 1, or even October, we have some that were effective in October 1 of 2022, so that cities can plan for the impacts. That didn't happen here.
So, Paul, when we did that study, because I just don't remember what it said about those two impact fees, did it say we needed to raise them?
Well, based on the last time we actually brought impact fees in front of the commission, which was in 2016, at that point in time, it was, we could have raised them at that time, and the commission wanted to stay status quo as to what they are. What's interesting is the water impact fee, with these indexed rates, is actually right where it's supposed to be. It's, I don't know, it's within five or 10 bucks, which is kind of crazy to me, but that was kind of impressive how that worked. Now, we've always done a, provided a discount on the sewer, and the sewer is quite a large difference, but that was based on previous commission's decision to discount that rate. So that one is very different.
Okay, but did that, did what we looked at or what we talked about in January say that we needed to raise those rates, besides the indexing?
No, we did not talk about raising those rates at all, and just leaving them the same.
It wasn't, but it, it wasn't suggested that we should?
It was not.
Whether the commission had said no or not?
No.
But you're, but what I hear you saying is that our sewer rates are too low, or not the rates, but the impact fee is too low.
Right, which, once again, those have been discounted for at least 14 years.
Do you know why we discounted them?
Well, like I said, we had the discussion back in 2016, and I think, once again, coming out of the economic downturn, I think the thought process was, and I'm not trying to think for the commission, but was to leave them where they were, provide those same discounts that we had provided all along, and hopefully to spur some new development. Looking back at the impact fees that we charge here in Dunedin, we're mostly on the, on the rates, we're, you know, mid to the lower portion on impact fees, we're actually at the higher end of our neighbors throughout the county.
Including sewer?
This summer, we're spending time together outside.
Including sewer?
I'd have to go specifically look at that. What I was looking at was the combined water and sewer together, because usually you're paying for both when you're, when you're adding an impact fee.
Well, and frankly, sewer is almost most important, given, given all the work we're needing to do, pipes and everything, so...
Right. Well, and where we're at now with that specifically, you know, we have our subject to sewer programs that we're working on, and the monies that we have coming in, I hope are going to be just about enough to cover those. After we do lofty pine estates and we do Gulfview Estates, we're not going to have a whole lot that we can spend those impact fees on. So leaving it at those rates work out actually well for us, so we're not getting to a point where we, the rates or the money is just sitting there pretty much in the bank and we can't spend it.
Okay. Okay. This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to come forward and speak to this item, please feel free to do so. Give us your name and address for the record, and then you'll have three minutes on the clock above my head.
Good evening. I just want to first thank the commission for giving me the opportunity to speak. My name is Tony Stillow. I currently live at 2783 Enterprise Road East, Apartment 35, in Clearwater. I was born and raised in St. Petersburg, and I am a student currently attending St. Petersburg College's Public Policy Administration Program. I'm presently working on a case study project for Professor Cronch Knabel's Policy Leadership class. I'm here tonight because I wish to speak to Agenda Item 2A, First Reading of Ordinance 21-30 Regarding Legislative Changes to the Water and Sewer Impact Fees. My position on this issue, first and foremost, is for the city to vote for approval of this item, as passing of this ordinance will allow the city to comply with HB 337. However, I am concerned for how this law could impact the state as a whole, and I want to thank Director Stanek for taking the time to help me better understand this proposed ordinance and the state law surrounding it. He provided me with a lot of great insight. After speaking with the director via phone on Monday, and after reviewing the information he graciously provided, along with my own research, it is clear to me that the areas with more landmass to expand, the regions currently known as the bedroom communities of the state, specifically Hillsborough and Orange Counties in particular, could have serious budget impacts because of House Bill 337. What struck me most of all was reviewing the report from the Office of Economic and Demographic Research from March of this year. It clearly showed that these counties are very concerned about the capping of impact fees from year to year. I'm all for encouraging growth and prosperity, but it seems to me that this bill may have been passed without properly considering the long-term ramifications of implementation, as well as the costs and manpower required to conduct studies before being able to raise fees beyond the cap of 3% if necessary. This law is well-intentioned and will make an impact, and impact fees easier to anticipate from year to year, but I just hope that the county and city governments that are already being strained, dealing with budget shortfalls due to the ongoing pandemic, do not have to raise taxes in other areas to make up for the lack of impact fee revenue. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to come forward and speak to this item? Paul, did I just hear from that gentleman that we can raise it 3% each year?
That, that, the report that I sent Anthony was done back in March, and I believe some of the initial language in the bill was talking about 3%, and that's what that report was based on. By the time the report got to its final status, when Governor DeSantis signed it into law, that 3% had been removed.
Okay. All right, we'll come back to the maker of the motion, Vice Mayor Gow.
It's interesting when people in their early education and members of the public can see a bad bill when it comes to light. It's disappointing, because it's something we have to do. This is home rule in action. It's why we fight every day with Tallahassee, to protect the community. The mayor and I got awards this year as home rule heroes. Yay for us, and it's, it's nice to get that pat on the back, but it's extremely disappointing when you see the efforts that, you know, the impact that we make is so small, and it's so hard to fight against home rule, but it's something that we do do. This is something we have to do, so not much more I can say.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
You know, the only thing I would say, I was really taken aback that the retroactive portion even more. I mean, you know, that it didn't have a start date that would give people time, whatever circumstance they may be in with these impact fees, to figure it out, and by making it retroactive to, what was it, July? July?
Retroactive to January.
January. Retroactive...
I'm sorry, retroactive to January, then, you know, what, it just causes a major scramble. And I'm not really hearing that that exemption, it sounds good that there can be an exemption, but it looks like you have to have a pretty strong degree of proving the need, extraordinary circumstance, to get that exemption. So, you know, I was, I was really sort of taken aback. It sounds like we're in pretty good shape with Paul, but I can, I can see, I thought that was very well-written and thought out by our student, that some of the larger counties and cities that still have a lot of development coming in, it will definitely have an effect on them. So, thank you.
Commissioner Cronk, though?
Great lesson for great planning. Thank you, I have nothing further to add.
Commissioner Frehney?
Yeah, I mean, I've said it, it's disappointing, and I think that it's one thing to see something egregious and then they want to take a control of it, it's another thing when you get in the middle of entities that are trying to do good, logical business planning, and instead you make it very difficult for them and pull them out of indexing, and, and I think that this is a really good example. It may have small effect on us compared to others, but it's a great example where our citizens have to pay attention, because they come here and they talk to us about the issues of, you know, development, and, you know, you're being too development-friendly. Well, guess what? There's a lot of things that we get forced to do from our state, and, you know, and it is against good business logical practice of what our community wants, so, but it is what it is, and obviously I'll vote to approve it.
So, you know, I'm just thinking of other examples of this type of thing, not impact fees, but the tree issue.
The trees, that's what I was thinking.
You know, we, as a city, are a tree city, USA. We've been known for our trees, and whenever a big tree that you can see on a main road gets cut down for something, we all hear about it over and over and over again. And that legislation by the state that stopped us from, or allowed a resident to get any old arborist from a tree-cutting service, by the way, their mission is to cut down trees and make money, not to preserve them, that any old arborist could give the okay to cut down a tree, came from a legislator that lives on a farm in the middle of Florida that has hundreds of acres, who wanted to be able to cut his, cut a tree down without having to jump through any hoops. Well, do you see any farmland around us? You know, and so when one legislator sees one issue and then makes the whole state suffer to accommodate whatever their need is, perceived need, it's ridiculous. I will talk about the CRAs. We had one or two South Florida CRAs that were, you know, not keeping good books, let's put it that way. And come to Dunedin, we're probably the best CRA that exists in the entire state, but yet they spent, what, three, four years trying to abolish all CRAs within a period of time because of two CRAs that weren't keeping... because of two CRAs that weren't keeping their books right? And here we are. A legislator didn't like that this one city ratcheted up their impact fees, probably because they hadn't done it in 15 years, just like what we did.
That is correct.
Okay, which is why we index so that we wouldn't make these drastic changes. It's why we do it with our water and sewer and garbage bills because so that it's not that big of an impact financially to our residents or or toward the developers. And they're going to do this, you know, to us. And so it's really, really important for our residents to, you know, watch the legislative updates, watch Florida TV, you know, watch what they're doing because, you know, if they spent more time worrying about solving problems that affect overall Floridians and less time trying to micromanage what we do here, we would be a lot farther in this state. That's that's very disheartening. So, and and just another thing, I mean, I don't know how many times, I mean, you see people talk on social media about development and overdevelopment and their concerns about that, and inevitably, in that conversation, someone will pipe in and say, do we even have enough water for these new residents? They always ask that question.
Again.
Always. That's always a question, you know, and fortunately, we've done our planning right, but this is the way they're thinking. And so those impact fees are supposed to help us expand or improve the system to accommodate those new people, and now you want to limit us to do that? I feel a little bit like, you know, they're out of touch with what's really happening in in most Florida cities. Not all, and we're not all the same. And to treat us like we are is just not good leadership, in my opinion, but. Okay, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Franny?
Aye.
Commissioner Torga?
Aye.
Commissioner Kynes?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Gow?
Aye.
Mayor Bajowski?
Aye. That motion passes unanimously, and there will be a second reading on September 16th. All right, now we'll move on to the second reading of Ordinance 21-27, Historical Landmark Designation for 227 Aberdeen Street. Thank you, Paul.
Something happy.
Welcome back, Joe. Haven't seen you in a while.
Ordinance number 21-27, an ordinance of the City of Dunedin, Florida, designating the home located at 227 Aberdeen Street as a historic landmark and providing for an effective date. And this is reading of Ordinance 21-27 on second reading by title only.
Thank you. Can I have a motion, please?
Summit.
Second.
Commissioner Kynes and Commissioner Franny, thank you. Welcome, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Joseph DePasqua, the Assistant Director of Community Development on behalf of the Community Development Department. And so this evening, obviously, second reading of Ordinance 21-27 for the Historic Landmark Designation for the property at 227 Aberdeen Street. Just very quickly, as as everybody knows from first reading, the structure was built in 1925 in the Spanish Mediterranean architectural style, referred to as the Armston Home. The Historic Preservation Advisory Committee did meet on June 10th of this year and unanimously recommended the approval of this designation. And so, of course, on second reading, staff's recommendation is to approve the ordinance as presented.
Okay, can you show the pictures for the benefit of anybody being?
I did not.
Okay, gotcha. All right. Any questions for Mr. DePasqua?
No.
I think the Ellingers are here, so they're here to accept their plaque. And Vinnie, are you going, are you going to?
I was going to open it up to the public first.
Oh, sorry. I'm sorry.
This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to come forward and speak to this item, please feel free to do so. Okay, seeing none. Vinnie, do you have anything you wanted to to share?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners?
City employees, I want to thank you once again on behalf of the Historic Preservation Committee. Once again, we are adding to our historic district, and this is especially an important house, Mr. Armston and his family, which are still around the community. I actually had a conversation with the Armston family, and to say the least, they were delighted the fact that their family home was going to be on the historic register in Dunedin. So that was the one thing, this is really the first time we had a family member step forward to say how proud they were of this happening in our community. So that was a great honor. And Mr. Armston himself has had a background history in construction, work, banking, Chamber of Commerce, and of course, we all know his fountain on the corner of Armston Park near Edgewood Park is in memory of the family there. So we want to say at this time, at 227 Aberdeen Street, we'd like to bring up the owner and have them, we have them here and present this plaque to them so that we can have it put on the side of the home.
Very good.
This is Brett and Veronica Ellinger.
Welcome.
I want to present this to you on behalf of the City Commission and our Historic Preservation Committee. Once again, you've done a beautiful job with the home, and we thank you for everything that you've done and being a part of this program. And if you'd like to say something.
Yes, we're honored, and thank you very much. We are absolutely enjoying the home and it was a heart.
Well, thank you for taking it on.
Yes, thank you so much.
It's been a project, but it's been awesome. Thank you so much.
You found your forever home, right?
We absolutely have.
Yes, that's fabulous.
It's a beautiful home, and it is, I think I tell my husband every day, you can definitely tell it's been a happy home, which is very unique to have.
It's important.
Yeah.
Yes, thank you.
Well, congratulations. Congratulations.
Commissioner Kynes, I don't know if you were going to say anything at the follow-up of the commission meeting, but I wanted to thank the two committee members that are working on a project along with you with the Florida Pinellas Council. Do you want to say something about reaching the goal, or are you going to say something after the fact?
Well, we're we're, we were going to do the second reading of Lynn Olson's, and then maybe we can discuss how that that effort's going. We're going to do our second reading. I just wanted to say, I know I'm totally tromping on your rules of order and procedure, but I did want to thank Ann Botnerberg, who worked very hard on putting together Lynn Olson's application and and her home that she rents application and Kevin Connell's application, and there were four, and and what we, you know, we can't call it that anymore, but the house, it used to be sort of a not very good house.
Yes.
Yeah, so she really worked so hard. You know, I I really just wanted to, to, you know, you really deserve a lot of recognition on your historic research. It's just been extraordinary, Ann.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, are we going to?
We're going to come back to the commission and let me close this item out.
Perfect.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, so any final comments from the commission members besides Commissioner Kynes? Just kidding.
No, I just, it was great, and I'm sorry they already left, but it's awesome to see that kind of passion in our community.
Okay, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Torga?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Gow?
Aye.
Commissioner Franny?
Aye.
Commissioner Kynes?
Aye.
Mayor Bajowski?
Aye, and that motion passes unanimously. Now we'll go on to the second reading of Ordinance 21-28, Historical Landmark Designation for 723 Loudon, which is Lynn's property. So Nikki, would you please read that by title only?
Ordinance number 21-28, an ordinance of the City of Dunedin, Florida, designating the home located at 723 Loudon Avenue as a historic landmark and providing for an effective date. And this is reading of Ordinance 21-28 on second reading by title only.
Thank you, makers. Commissioner Kynes, who's going to be my second?
So moved.
Okay, Commissioner Torga, thank you. Joe?
Good evening again, Joseph DePasqua, Assistant Director of Community Development on behalf of the Community Development Department. Again, second reading, there's been no change between first and second reading. The property in question at 723 Loudon Avenue is built 1928 in Craftman bungalow-style architecture, the Copeland Home. The Historic Preservation Advisor Committee also heard this application on June 10th of this year and unanimously recommended approval of the local historic designation for the property. So naturally, staff's recommendation is to approve this ordinance on second reading.
Okay, this is a public hearing. Anybody wishing to come forward and speak to this item? Okay, seeing your hearing done, we'll come back to the commission for any final comments.
I just want to say, I'm sorry we can't show our pictures because, you know, they're really so wonderful. Ann actually took a lot of those pictures, and it's a beautiful bungalow. Many of us have been over there. And so I just, you know, oh, I know what I was going to say. I am really off tonight, you know, I just can't get on the ball. Lynn is out of town, and she really, really wanted to accept her plaque, so we're going to try to put her in on the 16th so she can just come forward and receive her plaque and say a few words.
Can we just stick that under presentations?
That's where.
Okay.
That's it.
Anybody else?
No.
Well, as I mentioned, I've had a number of enjoyable afternoons and evenings in that home. It's gorgeous, and what she's done to it is absolutely spectacular. I know she's watching. She texted me after the the last one and watched all her comments. It was just so sad she couldn't be here. So congratulations, Lynn. We'll have you here on the 16th. So roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Franny?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Gow?
Aye.
Commissioner Torga?
Aye.
Commissioner Kynes?
Aye.
Mayor Bajowski?
Aye, and that motion passes unanimously. Okay, so you wanted to talk about?
I think, Vinnie, Vinnie, do you want to come forward?
Thank you, Joe.
For a minute. Thank you, Joe. Thank you, Joey. I think you wanted to, you know, we've been working on this digitization process, which is for the Kellogg Mansion, and it is a, it is an endeavor that was sort of brought by the H-PAC. The H-PAC Historic Preservation, of course, is not a 501(c)(3), and that's where the Pinellas Community Foundation came into play, just as they did with the Gladys Douglas property. They were wonderful partners on that. So they, the process is, they have been collecting the funds, and I want to say Ann Botnerberg and Sharice Ponraj have spent hundreds and hundreds of hours researching, looking at photography of the many time, the timelines of the entire, when it first was, you know, built onto its present day. And they've also studied, you know, reams of the proper vendor that will be able to do the Oculus creation. And what will happen now, we are at, well, we're actually over our first tier, which was 25, and trying to move on up to the next tier. And but the city at that point will will do the vendor, and the city will then pay for the vendor that's chosen to create this Oculus presentation. And so that's, that's how it goes. It just sort of flows through the Pinellas Community Foundation to the city, and then it will be gifted, donated to the Dunedin History Museum. And, you know, the the bottom line here is that sometimes it's very difficult. I've, I know Vinnie's sat on many historic panels, and I saw with the Florida Humanities Council, it's very difficult for these museums throughout Florida, who have such a rich history, to be able to access technology. And that's what we would like to do. By gifting this project to the Dunedin History Museum, they're going to be able to show the state that you can access this technology that's only being used now in large museums because it's such a wave of the future. So that's the project, and again, I, Ann Botnerberg and Sharice are, they're just dynamos, and I greatly appreciate it. And Vinnie, we're working very hard to make the History Museum very proud of this concept.
Vinnie, did you want to come forward and speak to that or about your event, upcoming event?
Oh, yeah.
Well, again, I just want to give kudos to Deborah for working through with the Pinellas Foundation because that took some maneuvering. That was a key part of this whole process, so thank you for doing that. And again, kudos to the two ladies that worked as well. I don't know if Ann wants to get up and say anything, but she worked very hard on this project. But again, we're on the first level. That will bring us up to the second level to produce a project, a product that will continue to be used through different interaction and traveling exhibits at the museum.
Question? Event, Vinnie?
With November 6th, I didn't, November 6th, again, before the building is altered or taken down, we are promoting a function, a cocktail party. The family generously has allowed us to have one, what we call the Last Hurrah, at the Kellogg's Mansion, which will be November 6th from 5:30 PM till 9:00 PM, cocktail semi-formal or casual, and it will be sunset on the pier, cocktails, refreshments, food. And then we are also giving the opportunity for people to auction and bid on items from the Kellogg's Mansion as souvenirs or keepsakes of the Kellogg's Mansion that will be further used for educational program through the museum. And again, that was with the help of the city. For both of you, the city manager and our city attorney were very instrumental in making all of that happen. Without them, that would not have come through either. So I thank you both for the work you did on that. Thank you.
Good. Yeah, Vinnie? Vinnie? Vinnie, so the the money for the actual event, is that designated or is that just, is that going to go to operations for the museum?
That will be operations at this time. The Board of Directors is looking at the the auction money as part of a reserve on that. Again, because of COVID, we were closed for the six months. Some of our reserves had to be used for that project, and some of the reserve money will be put back depending on the amount of money that's made from the auction. And then the rest will be put in to be used for a future, a financial reserve for the museum.
Good. I'm glad, that's exciting.
We're working on not coming back.
Well, you know, the, and again, and Mo, that was an excellent question. All the proceeds from the gala, which I so, as I know, will be totally over-the-top wonderful, and and the artifacts auction goes directly to the Dunedin History Museum.
And that will be open to the public. Right now, we're looking at possibly two dates. It will be online as well as, right now, the major auction on November 13th, the following Saturday after the event is held, and people can bid on virtually almost everything at the mansion.
Very good.
And thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And thank you, Commissioner Kynes, for your continued efforts on preserving Dunedin's history. We so appreciate that.
Thank you.
Bye, Ann.
Bye.
Okay, we will move on now to the approval of a contract to Widow Bryan's of of Washington, DC to provide compliance consulting services for our American Rescue Plan Act of 2021, who I just signed all kinds of paperwork for this afternoon.
Good evening.
Got those papers for you.
Oh, great, thank you.
Yep, they're all signed.
Thank you, Mayor.
She, I mean, I meant to say Jennifer, my apologies. Okay.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, Les Tyler, the Finance Director. This item is approval of a contract with Widow Bryan LLC to provide consulting services for our American Rescue Plan Act grant of 2021. I want to mention, we have Matthew Hansen, who's an Associate Managing Director with Widow Bryan with us today on Zoom. Matthew is one of the key members of the Widow Bryan team assigned to our city engagement. The firm has a presence in Florida, I want to mention that. They have an office in Fort Lauderdale. Also, two members of the Widow Bryan team assigned to our city project are based in Florida. Matt Urkel, who's the project executive, is based in Sarasota, and Val Phillips is a project manager, and she's in Martin County. I'd like to briefly go over some background on the American Rescue Plan Act grant. It was enacted in March 2021, and it provides 350 billion in funding to state and local governments. Our city is considered a non-entitlement unit, is the term they use under the ARPA guidance. That definition is generally for cities with a population of 50,000 or under. The non-entitlement cities' funds pass through the state of Florida from the federal US Treasury. The state of Florida has sent our our city's coronavirus local fiscal recovery funding agreement to our city. We received it on August 16th for our review and approval. The total recovery fund- The total recovery funds for our city are 18.3 million dollars. Some key dates for the ARPA recovery funds I wanted to mention, the first is funds are eligible beginning March 3rd, 2021. December 31st, 24, 2024 is a key date. That is the date that the recovery funds must be either spent or obligated on a project or commitment. And then December 31st, 2026 is the period of performance end date and that basically is the deadline to spend the funds. One key item to mention in the compliance guidelines of this grant that is unique is local governments bear the responsibility of deciding if the projects are eligible under the ARPA guidance. That's unique to most grants. And to assist with the unique requirements of this federal grant, we, the city issued RFP 21-1185 for compliance consulting services for the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021 for the purpose of contracting with a consultant to assist us with the recovery efforts under COVID-19. The consultant primarily will assist us with expediting financial recovery and mitigation efforts through the ARPA grant and any other subsequent legislation that could be coming in the future from COVID-19 and/or other federal and state programs. Also, number two, limiting any subsequent audits or reviews and to minimize impacts from future disasters. And the third is determining the eligibility of projects for the city, for our city. Through the RFP process, the city received six proposals by the July 20th, 21st, the middle deadline. An evaluation committee ranked Widow Brian LLC of Washington, DC the highest and, and we're recommending, awarding the firm the contract. The contract will be used on an as-needed basis. The negotiated hourly rates are $75 per hour to $200 per hour. And we did hand out a hard copy that should be in front of you, hopefully on your dais, of the, the hourly rates by job classification in the Widow Brian proposal that should be before you now, just so you could see what the different classifications were. The initial contract is for three years. The contract may be renewed for a one, two-year additional period with the consent of both the city and the consultant. City staff is recommending approval of the contract, not to exceed 361,000. And this amount is based on the consultant's estimate of the work required during the three-year contract period. The contract will be budgeted in the American Rescue Plan Act fund of the city. The cost for this contract will be fully reimbursed by the ARPA grant. A future budget amendment will be required and will be brought forward to the City Commission in October for your approval. And that concludes my general presentation. I wanted to mention again that we have Matthew on Zoom here and him or I are happy to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Okay, Matt, did you have anything you wanted to add at this point?
No, I think that was a great overview and appreciate the opportunity to support the city and welcome, you know, happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thanks, Matt. Okay, questions?
I have a question. Matthew, is there any significance to the empty shelves behind you? I mean, are you just in a vacant office?
It's got dog bowls on there, I think.
You're scaring me, we're doing business with a vacant office there.
I'm, I'm in the process of selling my home in Phoenix, Arizona and getting ready to move to the Kansas City area. So you've, you've caught me mid-move.
Thank you. That's, that's my only question.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, does contracting with the company, Les, does, does this, or maybe Nikki, does this give us any clawback prevention? Is there any insurance if a mistake is made and the federal government says, no, you owe us the money back? Is there any protection within this contract?
I'll let Les speak to the business terms and then I'll pull up the.
Yeah, I don't believe this, I don't believe there's any terms about liability for clawback in the agreement, no.
There's traditionally professional, you'll require professional insurance, professional liability insurance in a consultant contract and that's typically meant to cover anything that would be covered in that kind of a scenario. But it would have to be, you know, it, those, it doesn't just cover a mistake. It would, it would cover something more egregious than that under your professional liability insurance or under the consultant's professional liability insurance.
And is, is there any, outside of this contract, is there anything, any type of insurance policy? Is there any concern that we get caught in a clawback situation and having to pony up three, five million dollars, whatever it would be?
So if I could, if I could actually speak to this for a second, with a traditional federal grant like this, that's not really how it works. So if the Treasury came in and monitored the city and had findings or questioned costs, the city would get an opportunity to resolve the findings. So lack of internal controls, duplication of benefits, you would put together a corrective action plan that said, this is how we're going to mitigate that going forward. If Treasury found questioned cost, you would be given the opportunity to provide supporting documentation to justify those costs. Worst-case scenario, you would be able to do a ledger transfer to move funds from what they deemed an ineligible expense to ineligible expense. It really would take something of a criminal nature for the city to be in a position of actually having to pay back funding to Treasury. So there is a, a much more a back and forth sort of process that would happen. Our goal is to work with the city and the city staff to provide all this supporting documentation so that you would never get in that position. But if you are in a position of having a monitoring finding, we would be there, you know, arm-in-arm with you to work through that process. But really, outside of a criminal action, you would not be in a position of having to pay back money to the Treasury.
Thank you.
That's a great explanation of the, of the process that we, we work through sometimes too in a, in a grant. And then I just did pull up the contract commissioner and there is the city's standard indemnification as well.
Okay, all right. And for, for the cost of this relationship, is there any way that that can be part of the, the funds? Or is that on behalf of the city? We enter this contract?
That's what he just said. It is handled by the Recovery Act. It's coming right out of the Recovery Act.
Yeah.
I missed that. All right. I was too focused on my.
No, but that's the best part, yeah.
It is. When I was too focused on my question, I didn't, didn't hear the preemptive answer.
It's getting paid for by that. So now we have somebody that has expertise in this area for those very concerns to help us.
And keep in mind, it's not to exceed as well. We're not saying that we're going to spend the entire 361,000, it's not to exceed.
Correct, right, right.
That was all, thank you.
Any questions on this end? Questions?
I know, I, that's what I thought. Nope, I don't have a question.
I must, I must say that I was initially a little alarmed when I saw this, this agreement that had been drawn up and I, in talking with the city manager and, and really putting some thought into it, I, I came to the conclusion that not just because it can be covered in, in the cost, the cost can be covered by, by the plan, but that in order for us to do this, we just want to make sure that we cross all the Ts and do it properly. And if we do, and if we do that, then it's highly likely that we're going to be safe in, in the way we spent the money. So I, I want you to know, Les, and so I appreciate this opportunity to say that, that at first, Bo, I was saying, well, but in consideration and the input that I got from the city manager, I, I'm sure there's a lot of people that if they don't hear this and don't get an opportunity to really understand what's happening, that, that they might do the same thing or same reaction that I have. I think that this organization, since he's on, since he's on the screen right now, obviously, obviously, your organization started in, in, in this area or specializes in this area. And really what it is, is really knowledge of, of, of what the federal government is going to do and how they're going to do it. And you collect all of the information together probably from all over the, all over the United States. So you really have a, a strong feeling of what is in fact not correct, but what is in fact going to be accepted. Is that correct?
It is, and thank you for that, those comments. Just to give you a little quick, you know, piece of my background. So I've been doing federal, state and local grants management for 27 years. I was with the Department of Justice as a Fed for 14 years. So I've been on that side of, of the, you know, transactions. I was the Director of Grants Policy at the Department of Justice. And for the last dozen years, I've been the centralized grants management official for the state of Arizona and actually ran their recovery office administering coronavirus relief funds for the last year. So a lot of experience, not only individually, but also the company as a whole.
By the way, thank you for that response to my question. And Les, again, I just want to let you know how I felt about it first. I appreciate you getting these numbers for me because obviously I've been in, I've been involved in this kind of stuff before as well. And, and I know that it is a little tricky, but obviously they put all the levels down and as, as our attorney knows, they do the same kinds of issues when, when they have to deal with something. And so it's just a matter of, of who has to touch it and how they have to touch it. And if somebody says, how come we need to have somebody tell us how to do that? Well, the other important part is that we need to make sure that there is somebody there that can do that and can handle that part of it. And of course, you will have the responsibility of making sure that the right person touched it and, and that you had that agreement with, with the group. So it, it's not just that you're just going to be sitting around watching what they do. You gotta, you'll be managing it, so.
We're working together very closely.
Yep, so, so by the way, thank you, Jennifer, for getting me all up to speed on that because again, it was challenging at first. Thank you.
The document that you gave us, the paper with it, it says original billing rate and the revised billing rate. The original, is that what we were doing before we went under contract and the revised is what we'll be doing now? Is that what it is?
Actually, that was, we, when going through the RFP process, we, we had six proposals. We narrowed it down to two firms and we had oral interviews with Widow Brian and one of the other firms. And, and we unanimously chose Widow Brian as the, as the winner. But we did.
You were negotiating, you negotiated what they originally proposed.
Exactly.
Got it.
We negotiated their proposal.
Okay. Thank you. And is this the group that, but we were using them?
Yes, this is, this is.
And this is the group that was working with the county as well?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay, which I think is an important note because, you know, the county's not going to jerk around.
Right.
And what they do with this because think about the amount of money that they're going to get.
Is that a legal term, jerk around?
Well, you're lucky I didn't say what I was really. I was trying to think quick of a better word.
It's a, it's a legal term.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, Nick.
Okay, anybody wish to come forward and speak to this item? All right, we'll come back to the commission. Any final comments, the maker? Oh, I need, I need a motion is what I need. Can I have a motion to approve?
Go ahead.
Commissioner Kynes and Commissioner Franny, okay. Any final comments?
You know, I just, I think that this is excellent to do. I think it even is better that we'll be working with the same vendor as the county has. I think that's a really strong basis of your credibility and you also showed us how many ways you've worked in this particular realm. You know, with the PPE, we didn't say, you know, instead of location, 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 it was documentation, documentation, documentation. And now we're with the ARPA and it's even, you know, we'll, we'll be receiving more funds and it's going to be even more stringent that we document what we can expend these funds on and how we've done it.
Correct, yeah. That's very true.
I'm, I think it's money that's very well spent.
Commissioner Franny?
Yeah, I mean, it's a small amount of money. I mean, Matt, don't get any ideas, I don't want you to spend it all, but it's a small amount of money in the big picture of the 18 million dollars we're receiving and the opportunity we have to take care of some very important issues with that money. And we have timelines to get there and if we don't have the expertise, I think we're going to lose valuable time and therefore lose our ability to do some of our projects. So I think this is really important and yeah, and I, I think the process was great and I'm certainly supportive of it.
I kind of agree with all my colleagues and this is such a huge dollar amount and for the price that we can get the expertise for is well worth the investment. So it's, it's a good day.
Anything else? Commissioner Torga, I know you kind of gave your comments before, but did you want to add anything?
I was basically asking the question and making comments about, about the question. But so, so I'd like to make a comment since Matt is on, on the screen right now again. We, we appreciate your help. We're going to pay for it. We appreciate it and, and I liked your background and have a good move. And Les, thank you for really shepherding this thing, sort of complicated, big, serious. Thank you.
I'm thrilled that we have, you know, expertise. I'm even more confident because it is somebody that the county chose, so it's not just little old 38,000 resident Dunedin, but it's, you know, a million resident, the county has faith in this organization. And, and I believe we, you know, we were just talking about this yesterday in a different meeting, you know, I, I think it's important that we, when we take on big things, that we, we have to hire the right people or contract with the right people that have the expertise. And yes, money is, is always a concern, but you know, you get what you pay for as well. And so I feel like in this case, you know, that's going to be the situation and I'm, I'm happy to do that. And I think you're going to need that because you're going to get questioned for the next three years ad nauseam.
I see.
You and Matt are going to be, yeah, you and Matt are going to be, you know, fast texting friends, I'm sure. And so I appreciate that. I'm going to do the vote, but I know you, you want to kind of talk a little bit about the next step?
Sure.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Let's do, roll call vote? Yeah.
Vice Mayor Gow?
Aye.
Commissioner Torga?
Aye.
Commissioner Franny?
Aye.
Commissioner Kynes?
Aye.
Mayor Bajowski?
Aye, and that motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Matt. Thank you, Les.
Thanks very much, Mayor.
Thank you.
Okay, so next step.
So, and Mayor, what you said is absolutely correct. Every department had meeting, you know, pretty much the whole meeting, Les, is this eligible, is that eligible? And, and he goes back and talks to Widow Brian and, and comes back with a, with a pretty fast answer. And Les is, is calm in the storm here, he really is. I mean, he's, he's very even keeled. It's 18.3 million dollars is, you know, a gift to be sure and there is a lot that we need to do. So, so we are going to put this in baskets. And we, you know, and so far the baskets that we've kind of created would be infrastructure, economic development, affordable housing and public safety, community services, that type of a thing. But that's just, just our first offer. I mean, I think the five of you have more say in, in the baskets that you're looking at. We want to go out to the community as well and, and talk to them a little bit about what their priorities would be moving forward. We had the resident survey and we actually have, you've budgeted another, funding for another resident survey. So this might be a question that we could fold into that survey as well. And Nicole is our new Assistant at the City Manager, is working on that now. So the first thing that, that we need to do though, there are a number of projects that are emergent and that we need to pay attention to immediately. So we're forming up those projects. A lot of them have been afforded to Widow Brian already for, you know, preliminary eligibility designation and then we need to move forward. I want to move really quickly on this because we're going to be competing for supplies, resources, people, you know, all those sorts of things in the county. So we're going to treat it though a lot like Penny. You, we designate the projects, we designate a funding, you know, the amount of funding, the timeframe that we're looking at. We advertise it in the community for comment and then we put it before all of you to adopt that plan. And then just like the business plan, we stick to that plan. And that's the only, only way that we're going to be able to get all this done within the timeframes that are specified by the federal government, which is, I mean, December 2024 is right around the corner. I mean, it really is, you know, so, and, and that's just, just encumbered. I mean, it's, you know, spent by December 2026. So we are going to be really, really, really busy with, with, with the, with the ARPA funding. We will report on it on a regular basis to all of you and to the community as well and that will be part of the plan. We'll put together a communications plan through our communications department for how we're spending the funds, on which projects and what the level of completion is. So there's, there's lots to do here and I'm just relieved now that, that we have Widow Brian on board and that we can really, really press the pedal all the way down on this to move it forward to all of you.
Do we have a workshop coming up?
We do actually at that workshop at the beginning of, of October, we want to start to really kind of frame it up for all of you and get your input on that. And then we want to talk a little bit about special events, funding moving forward as well. So that, that needs to come in relatively quickly because the special events are starting on the 13th.
As an FYI, I just got a call from Jack at The Merchants. He said he's having a heck of a time. He usually gets about 35,000 and sponsors. He usually gets about $35,000 in sponsorships, and he's not getting hardly any. And all the businesses that would normally be sponsors are saying they can't give the money because of COVID, because of what happened during COVID. So he's really, and he's probably the first big event for, you know, wines of blues. So I, I mean, literally, five minutes till six, it was him on the phone. He said, I'm in a panic. I said, don't worry, we're talking about it at the beginning of October, but I'm just saying, that was his expression. The other thing I wanted to share with with you and everybody is I, I did have a conversation with Commissioner Eggers from the county today, and we kind of talked about, you know, they've already gotten their money, but, you know, what their process is going to be. He said, we're taking it very slow. We're going to go out to the community, we're going to get community buy-in, and they're going to look at things also, since everybody in the county got money, they're going to look for projects that, that all cities, cities could partner in, or that, you know, if it's in a certain area, maybe two or three cities partner in along with them, that they would be the the larger funder, but we might contribute. Maybe it's an affordable housing project, maybe it's, I don't know. I really don't know, but that's what they're looking to try to figure out.
What about the thing we've been trying to get for 20 years where we don't have to go take all the waste down to...
That could be it.
Because that would be, you know, a really wonderful northern, at least, real impact to all of the cities.
Murph.
A murph, yeah.
That could be it. So they want to look at those kind of things? So I, I only bring that up because it just, we probably want to try to leave, you know, some money aside until they get through, or at least keep talking with Berry to understand what kinds of things they're thinking about. So if we have a basket, as you've referred to, that's in the basket that they're thinking about, you know, we might want to just set that basket aside and focus on the other things until they...
What amount of money are they getting?
Oh, God, it's big. I don't know, but it's really big.
More than us.
Yeah.
Well, yeah. I get that. How much more is it?
Well, and I mean, they have, what is it, 350? Let's say we'll just round it up to 400,000 unincorporated.
Yeah.
So if you do the math, they're probably getting 100 million at least, I would think. If we're getting 18, and we've got 38,000, they're probably getting 100 million.
Probably at least, yeah, probably.
Yeah, probably more.
That's why I wondered if it was like for unincorporated, or is it for everybody, or for, or maybe it's tagged somehow, separated out.
I don't think it matters.
It can matter. I mean, you know, I mean...
Matt has his hand up. Go ahead, Matt.
189 million.
189 million.
Does it matter, Matt, for them as to whether it's used in the unincorporated area or anywhere in the county?
It does not.
Okay.
So they use it all here?
Yeah. So I mean, I mean, see, I could really see some, some major affordable housing projects, and maybe that's where they'll focus it. I don't know, but they want to try to do some projects that are partnerships.
A bridge.
Around the, around the county. So, you know, when we're sitting there thinking about our pot and what we want to do with it, I just think we need to, we need to find out what they're thinking, what area of things they're thinking about. It could be 10 different things, depending on what area it is, or it could be one, one main focus. My guess is they're going to think about one main focus, because that's generally how they work, but...
Makes sense, yeah. Well, and the, you know, the Penny Fund has funds encumbered as well.
Right.
And this fund is going to be just like that, only much faster, you know, as far as a timeframe to expend the funds. But, I mean, there, there are funds in Penny that aren't spent yet and are not designated for anything, about 6.2 million at the end of the decade, right?
Yeah.
At this point. So it'll be the same type of situation, only we don't have, you know, Penny can, can roll, this can't. So, you know, if anything, we need to concentrate on this, actually.
Yeah. Well, and and projects that we can maybe remove from the Penny and cover with this.
Yeah, and Les has done some analysis to that end already, yeah.
You know, so that we can save our Penny for future things. Okay. All right. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you, Les. Then we have the proposed agenda for the 16th. Did anybody have any changes or updates to that?
I guess you're going to...
You're going to add the Lynn's plaque there.
Yes, now we'll go onto the presentations.
Thank you, Matt.
And then we also need to add an item 2D reimbursement for the CRA parking lot, Resolution 2123. And then we did decide on Tuesday evening to move the city manager's eval from the Tuesday work session to the Thursday night meeting as well.
So that's going to be added to the...
That's going to be added to those, but this was already printed at that time, so I just wanted to remind you before you voted.
Okay. I also have one item, but I gave it to the clerk earlier, but I...
The SRF loan agreement.
Yes.
And then, did this, the special magistrate, did you want to...
Well, actually, there's another item, but you, we may just need to put it on as a supplement or start item on, on Tuesday, and it is, we need to retain a special magistrate in order to start our municipal citation program that all of you had, had approved. And Nikki Fonda says...
Can we just put that on Tuesdays' meeting?
You can do that on Tuesdays.
Yeah, I mean, can you put it on Tuesday now?
Yeah.
You already put that agenda on Tuesday.
It's our agenda. We can do whatever we want with it.
Put it on Tuesday, okay.
Yeah, do it on Tuesday.
So we'll add the special magistrate to the Tuesday, and everybody is good with that.
And what about the SRF law?
We can't be eating up the...
I mean, that's not, that's not something that has to be on a Thursday night.
No, it's not, that's, that's more of a timing thing, to be sure that, that it's ready. I mean, we wouldn't have, there was concerns that it would be better, it should be a short item, but there were just concerns that we wouldn't have enough time. So, so we went with the 16th as a target date. You've already approved the resolution for that. Now this is the loan agreement, so it should be a very quick item.
Okay.
Thank you for that.
Okay. All right, are we very clear as to what's going to be on this agenda now?
Do you want me to repeat?
Yeah, tell us what we've added.
Okay, so on the September 16th evening meeting, everything that's included that you received, and then a reimbursement for the CRA parking lot, Resolution 21-23, the city manager's eval, and the SRF loan agreement will all be on Thursday. And then we did add the special magistrate to the Tuesday meeting as well.
Okay, so can I have a motion to approve all of that?
I'll move.
Second. Commissioner Frainey and Commissioner Kynes, thank you all in favor. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. All right, are there any informational items from anybody?
I just have one question. I'm going to really put the city manager on the spot. Are you doing like accomplishments for us?
I am. I was just working on them this afternoon. I should have them out, hopefully tomorrow afternoon.
You're trying to brag, you know? It's always good to have that before we do the evals.
Thank you for your patience with that, but yeah. You know, there are just so many of, no, just kidding.
It's a novel.
I'm kidding.
It's a novel.